I call the meeting of the common council to order. Since we are virtual, this meeting will be, we'll move directly to the roll call. Clerk Treasurer Aldrich, will you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Sandy Flora.
Present.
Gail Connor.
Present.
Spencer Kingery.
Present.
Cody Nelson.
Present.
Mike Isley.
And Mike had sent me an email indicating that he would not be back in town in time for the meeting, so he will not be with us tonight. So the only order of business is the review of transfers and encumbrances. First is there a motion to approve the transfers for the city of Delphi?
I would motion so.
We have a second, then we'll start the discussion.
False side.
There's a motion and a second. Is there a discussion of items on the transfers?
I have a question about each one of the transfers. Can you tell me the purpose for each one?
Would you like for me to explain that to you, or you want the mayor?
I will. Leanne, I would appreciate it if you would address these, and you're more familiar with these account numbers and stuff.
Sure. Let me give you, and I don't want to take too much of your time, but I want you to understand the process that a clerk treasurer goes through with this, especially with the Keystone system. During the situation where you're working towards closing out your books, during that process, there is a time period. And that's once all the bank accounts have been balanced with the funds, all corrections have been made. Everything is ready to get to a point that you can close out and address your financial statements that will be due. There is a point in Keystone that you can hit a button, and that button will automatically address the transfers and make them for you and print them out. Because we are doing this this year per request to have it done during the month of December instead of during our process to close out, the books have not been closed. We're not in that process. So at this point in time, after looking at the appropriation report, discussing it, for example, with the police department and the street department, these transfers were made to cover negative items in their budget this year. Does not mean that they mishandled their budget. Does not mean that they spent more than they were supposed to. It meant certain appropriation lines did not have enough in them and could have been transferred earlier. Those were done to cover items that were negative. Then there are times that you will do a transfer to set up an encumbrance. So there is one section of transfers that covers an encumbrance. The purpose of, the general purpose of a transfer is to cover any budgeted negative line item. Now, does that answer your question, or do you need more information?
No, I'd actually like an explanation as to the need to transfer money. I understand the second and third ones. Those were overtime to part-time and part-time to overtime within the police and the street department. What was the need for the first transfer listed from patrolman first class to police chief?
Well, if you look, just a minute, let me pull out my appropriation.
There was a negative balance of $2,347.54 in the, um, the sergeant.
Was not enough money budgeted in the 2020 budget line item to cover his salary?
Well, that, yes, that would be correct.
So the last council, when they created the 2020 budget, they simply didn't cover enough to pay his anticipated salary?
The funds, evidently, the figures that were given to the council to make their judgments was not sufficient, so, yes.
All right, and then I have, I have a question about the three transfers from engineering. Eighty-three, twelve account in the streets and parks department into eighty-three fifty, eighty-three fifty-two, and eighty-three fifty-three. Those three line items are not in our budget binder. I would like to know what the names of those three line items are.
Which number do you want first?
Do we just go in order, eighty-three fifty?
Eighty-three fifty is for streets and parks building gas. So that would be your propane that's down at the building over the hill, and it would be their share of the gas for this building here.
Okay, and then how about eighty-three fifty-two?
Eighty-three fifty-two is phone and internet.
And eighty-three fifty-three?
Eighty-three fifty-three is park utilities.
And can somebody address the fact that those are not in the budget, and we didn't budget any money in those this year? We should have. Is there a reason, I guess I'm asking, is there a reason those three line items don't show up in the budget binder we were given?
I think you combined it all and put it under utilities this year, and I think you made a notation of that when it was done.
The former mayor did.
I think that's correct.
So what line item would that have been, or just utilities?
Gail, I will be glad to do the research and pull it out of the budget binder that the mayor left and get it for you.
That's fine. And then I have a question about the following four at the bottom of the transfer list, from the mayor's department. Mayor's promotional. And those four transfers will come to the amount of $6,010.33.
Correct.
Those transfers were done into one line item, into promotional, in order to make it easier to do an encumbrance, which was.
Yeah, that's where my next question is going, but I can wait till we get to the encumbrances. I just wanted to verify the figures there. So I'm good on transfers.
Were there any other questions on the transfers?
I guess I do have one more. Is this coming to us tonight as a resolution? I know that.
I think this, I do not, we have never done it as a resolution in the past. It would be a part. It would be a part of your minutes. You're going to approve them. You're going to take a motion, you're going to take a vote, and you're going to approve them, and it will be a part of your minutes that will be presented and be in your minutes book.
I just wondered, because I know other clerk treasurers present it as a resolution, just so that there's like a paper trail.
I think there's a paper trail in your minutes.
So I would like to ask then, that what is given to us on this document be amended to show the purpose for the transfers?
Did I ask why?
What was that?
You were asked the question after why for accountability.
I mean, Mayor Whirling, you explained the four from your department that were being transferred into promotional so the money could be used for an encumbrance.
Correct.
Leanne explained about the police department. I would just like it added to the document.
If, if, if you want a statement included in the minutes that states that, it could be done so. But it's obvious a transfer. And if you look it up, a transfer is to cover negative amounts or to move funds in order to do encumbrances. So it's obvious that the first set of transfers is to cover negative amounts, because all you have to do, and a record is kept of a, an appropriation reports that would be printed out at the time that you make these transfers, and then one later on after the transfers are made. And that becomes permanent.
That would be fine if it just, you know, stated that the first four were for the purpose of covering negative balances, and then the second four were for the purpose of, of an encumbrance.
Will be the last four that were for an encumbrance?
Right.
More than four in the list?
No, the first four, the first four transfers, Leanne explained, from the police department and the street department were for, from the first four accounts, is what I should say to clarify, were for the coverage of negative balances, and the last four from the mayor's department were to utilize money for an encumbrance.
Correct. And for your information, the utilities account number is 101-008354.
Thank you.
And that was consolidated from the other accounts.
Should those three transfers be into the eight-three-five-four fund, then?
No, they should not. The present budget is using the other numbers. It doesn't change over until the 21 budget.
All right.
Since we are conducting this meeting virtually, the vote will be by roll call. When your name is called, please indicate whether your vote is an "aye", "nay", or whether you abstain. On the matter of accepting the transfers as presented, President Pro Tem Connor?
No. I asked that there be an amendment to it, or notification of, oh, no, never mind, I get it, she's going to put that in the minutes. I'm sorry, I will say "aye".
President, Council, Councilperson Flora?
Aye.
Councilman Kingery?
Aye.
Councilman Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries? Four-zero. Second, is there, second on the issue, is there a motion to approve the city of Delphi encumbrances?
Motion for the encumbrances.
Thank you, Nelson, is there a second?
Second.
And was that Kingery?
Kingery did the first, Cody did the second.
Okay, thank you. Let me change that here. Okay, is there any discussion on the encumbrances?
I have a question about KJG. In the transfer, you transferred $6,010.33 into the promotional budget from which this is to be paid. That budget started with $1,000 at the beginning of the year, so I don't see any other transfers into that budget, so there's not $9,500 in that budget to encumber. Seven dollars, ten dollars and thirty-three cents.
KJG is being paid out of building maintenance.
It says 3390, which is the mayor's promotional, correct?
That should be, yeah, for the, um, so the Mega LED technology sign gets split between those two line items, two accounts. But the KJG structural review and feasibility study and the Visual Edge phone system are coming out of the city building repair and maintenance budget. So that needs to be corrected?
Yes.
That can be made more clear, yes.
To 2360. Is that correct?
Yes.
I don't understand your question.
Yes.
On the, on the paper that we received under encumbrances, KJG structural review and feasibility study, $9,500, it shows that that's going to come out of the mayor's promotional budget. But you're saying it should come out of miscellaneous repairs, which is a different line item number, so that needs to be corrected from 3390 to 2360.
That can be done.
And then you said that the Mega LED tech is coming half out of the promotional and half out of the miscellaneous repairs?
It is left for half, yes.
And.
Whatever is left out of the city, the city building, maintenance, whatever residual will come out of the other.
And were three quotes taken for that purchase?
No, they were not. And this was initially, so we've already discussed the COVID relief fund of $93,794 that the city received reimbursement of police salaries for, and how that was expended. A second 10% allocation was added in the last month or two of the year for safety awareness. And we have applied for approval to IFA of this sign as part of our, as our safety awareness component. So that would be $9,380 that we really have no other way to get compensation for unless the sign is through. I think that, so that had to be done very quickly, and that paperwork was submitted this past week. If we do not get that grant, or the reimbursement approved, then we would use the, the technology sign out of the encumbrances. And no, there were not three, um, three actual quotes received, although I did do quite a bit of research on the internet.
Our purchasing policy, according to our city ordinance, requires three quotes for anything between $5,001 and $75,000. And this money is being expended out of already appropriated money in this past year's budget. So in order for the money to be encumbered, there would have had to have been three quotes taken for this purchase to occur. You can't bypass the law, even though it's the end of the year and things need to be done quickly. We still have to follow the law. And I guess I'll go ahead and ask the same question about the next two items. Were three quotes taken for each one of those?
They were not. For Haley's, we requested a quote from Mulhops, which is really about the only other company in the area that could provide a quote on the auto lock system that we're hoping to get to the parks. They did not submit a quote. The concrete tables and benches come from an existing contractor who has supplied the other tables and benches to the parks. I understand that, but again, our city ordinance requires anytime you're going to expend a certain amount of money, you have to have three quotes. And you're looking to spend already appropriated money from the past year, and you're looking to do that without the proper procedures being followed. And I am going to take exception to that. And I don't want to be a part of anything illegal tonight. Or is there any other discussion on the encumbrances? We are ready for the vote. The vote, again, will be by roll call. Roll, please indicate whether your vote is an "aye", an "nay", or whether you abstain. So on the matter of accepting the encumbrances as presented, President Pro Tem Connor?
No.
Councilwoman Flora?
Can we have, is it possible to get, like, proof that we tried to reach out to Mulhops to try to cover the three estimates?
As indicated, Aaron Lyons contacted both Mulhops and Haley's, and Mulhops did not return an estimate. He called them a second time, and they did not return an estimate.
Okay, all right, and I'm an "aye".
Councilman Kingery?
I'm an "aye", with a notation that for future reference, to make sure we get quotes prior to this passing again.
Are you voted? Councilman Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries? Next is the.
Anita, could you hold up just a minute? I want to clarify something.
Sure.
Okay, when you're looking at the three items that were encumbered for KJG and Visual Edge and Mega, you saw over there the 101003390. That is where we transferred items going into one line item, which was 3390. The item had a balance, so once you transfer those other amounts in, that makes a total balance of $6,994.67. Now, the other item was 2360. 2360 is the city buildings account, which has a balance of $17,356.04. So we're encumbering enough out of those two that then totals those three amounts taken, which is 22932. So when that encumbrance was, when that number, that appropriation number 101003390 was used, it was correct. That is where you transferred the different items and put them into one line item.
You transferred $6,010.33 into the 3390 account, which had $1,000 in it at the beginning of the year.
Which had a balance of $9,8434 in it at the time of the transfer. That then makes a balance of 6,994.67.
And you can't encumber $9,500 from an account that only has less than $7,000 in it. I know that, because I've discussed this multiple times with the State Board of Accounts. And they're concerned that this kind of activity goes on in this town.
Gail, I'm going to explain something to you on an encumbrance one more time. You take this six, the $6,944.67 out of the account for the mayor promotional. The balance of that encumbrance that needs paid for the $9,500 then comes out of the account that is the 2360 for the city building.
That is not what the paperwork we have in front of us states. The paperwork states that the $9,500 for KJG will come out of the mayor's promotional line item. There is not enough money in there to do that. If you're going to use both funds, then it should denote both funds.
It is, one's right underneath the other one. Perhaps it should have been done to make it clearer for you.
The one underneath was for the amount of money for Visual Edge. That's the 3450, and that shows that it's coming out of the 2360 line item.
Those, no. The way this is written, those two items total. Those two items total more than you need to encumber for those specific things. So you have encumbered those funds, and it will be utilized.
And that's not how the DLGF and the State Board of Accounts is going to look at it?
So let me ask this. I mean, so there's been multiple discussions of, you know, President Pro Tem, you brought up multiple times that the State Board of Accounts does not like the way things are currently done in Delphi. There's been very little, I guess, mention of, in the past, of having problems with the State Board of Accounts upon their audits. If it is such a problem, why has it not been addressed in audits? Or why, why is it not a problem?
There've been a lot of things done with internal controls, and I had those conversations, and I've told you this before when you and I have talked, that the State Board of Accounts said that they don't always catch everything. But now they're aware of these things, and they're gravely concerned about some of these things. So during the next audit, they will be addressing these issues. And the fact that we are doing this at the end of the year, this is an expectation for the State Board of Accounts, not just for the city of Delphi, because I requested it. It's for every city to have an end-of-the-year meeting to take care of transfers and encumbrances. The transfers can be done at any time of the year within a department. A department head can request a transfer of his or her funds at any time during the year. It doesn't have to be approved by us. It's coming to be entered into the minutes, the meeting minutes here for some accountability, I guess. These don't even have to be approved by us. The encumbrances do. And if you look at how other entities are doing their encumbrances, it's done with documentation. And it's done with specific documentation.
There is what other entities do, and then there's what Delphi does. As long as, you know, and it has not been proved in the past that Delphi is in the wrong, then.
That doesn't, it's okay, Cody, and that doesn't mean it hasn't been wrong. It just means it hasn't been caught.
Okay, so it's not been caught, so it's not a problem. So I just, I guess I don't see the problem.
I know you don't.
If it was a problem, I would expect that the State Board of Accounts, the accounting, you know, organization for the entire state of Indiana, would find something that a certain municipality has been doing for years. If they cannot find that that is a problem, I don't expect that it is a problem.
Then you might want to have that conversation with Todd Caldwell or Susan Gordon. I would encourage every member of the council to start having conversations with people at the state. Because I know that you don't want to believe what I tell you, so please have conversations with the people that have the information.
I will be honest, I have actually gotten hold of the, you know, DLGF, State Board of Accounts, multiple times on issues that we have brought up and that were reported to be having done wrong. And I got to tell you, every time I've either come back and learned additional stuff, that we are not doing things wrong, because you are missing a key aspect of the entire situation.
The DLGF is looking at availability of funds. And that's where they're giving information, on the availability of funds. That's their oversight for a city or a county or any kind of entity, to make sure that before the funds are expended or appropriated, that they are actually available. And those are the conversations that I've had with them, and I have multiple emails from several people at the DLGF.
Gail, if you're going to have the emails, you need to forward them to us, so we can see it too. Because I'd like to know what you're asking and the specifics to what the responses are from DLGF.
That's perfectly fine. I'd be happy to send you your work and stuff.
Like this as well.
That's fine. I'll send them to everyone. I've taken the time as a councilperson to learn as much as I can because I want to do my job as effectively for the citizens that elected me.
So you sent me months ago a list of emails and, you know, follow-ups that you had done. And then I further followed up and did a backtrack of largely a lot of your work. And, you know, multiple times I found that the city is not in the wrong. So I just, I don't know. I'm not...
And I'd like to see those.
I will find them.
Thank you.
So, Gail, you had asked for the backup of the documentation for the different encumbrances, and if you looked at the purchase orders for those, you would see that the account number for the city building miscellaneous repairs is the one that is being utilized first for KJG architecture. And moving on to the next one. Same is true for the Visual Edge IT. And then on the third, for mega LED technology, shows the split there.
Right. And that's what I looked at, and that doesn't jive with what we were given on this one sheet of encumbrances because it says for KJG, on the purchase order that you sent me today, it says 2360, and on this piece of paper it says 3390. It shows city building miscellaneous repair, the 2360 line item is what it shows for KJG.
We can certainly make that change.
And that's all I was asking because there is money in the 3390 account to cover the $9,500 that the Board of Works has already approved to be spent.
You can show the appropriate split then in the minutes.
Yeah.
Moving on, so the next item of business is the fire territory transfers and encumbrances. And really, we are accepting these, we are not approving them because the Territory Board is the one that makes the approvals on, on those, and they did so at their meeting that was held on December the 9th. So as the fiscal agent for the Fire Territory, we have their list of cancers and encumbrances, and it's really a question of, are we accepting them? So I would entertain a motion to accept the Fire Territory transfer and encumbrances.
I motion that we accept them.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Again, we'll be voting by roll call. President Pro Tem Connor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Flora? Councilwoman Flora, you're muted.
Oh, I thought, unmuted me. I'm sorry. Aye.
Council, Councilman Kingery?
Aye.
Councilman Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now, at the December 7th meeting, there was a request to have a work session to review the scoring report for the Small Business Resilient Grant applications for round two. The application deadline line is coming up, it'll be 4:30 PM on January 8th. Thus far, we've received 11 applications. And I'm hoping we can set a date and time for the work session. The January agenda for the council meeting is relatively light at this point, so would it be acceptable to schedule the work session following the council meeting?
I would agree with that.
That'd be fine.
Can I ask why so few applicants?
I think we just haven't, I, I imagine that we will have quite a few. I don't know what the, most people wait until pretty much the last minute to get them in, in my experience with other kinds of grants. I don't know what the sequencing was for the first round, but I bet if I looked back at the dates received, that, you know, there, it would be heavily weighted towards the end. We'll be sending out reminders and posting reminders on Facebook page and so forth. So I expect that there'll be quite a few people working on this over the, you know, holiday weekend, and we should see a number of applications coming in next week.
Thank you.
So is there a consensus to have the work session then, following the, I guess, without objection, we will schedule the work session immediately following the council meeting? So we'll adjourn the council meeting and then open the work session if that, if there are no objections.
Objection.
Pardon me?
No objection.
So the only other item that I have on the agenda is a reminder for you of the items that will need to be done in the January meeting. Council will elect President Pro Tempore, appoint council representatives to area plan commission, representative to the Northwest Solid Waste District, to the Carroll County Administrative Transportation Committee, and two representative to the Delphi Redevelopment Commission. So the next order of business would be comments or requests from the council. President Pro Tem Connor?
Nothing.
Councilperson Flora?
Nothing.
Councilperson Kingery?
Nothing today.
Councilperson Nelson?
Oh, yeah. I just would like to wish everybody a Happy New Years.
Thank you, and same to you. Clerk Treasurer Aldrich, any comments? The request?
No. Hi. No, not right now.
Public comments? Hearing, is there a motion to adjourn?
There was a comment in the chat, there was a question in the chat from the public.
When do we... If I can fill that up.
It says, when do the council members sign the approved minutes?
You mean from prior meetings?
I don't know. It came from the comment.
If it is from the, this, since this was a meeting, a special called meeting, we will not approve, you know, these, approve any minutes from prior council. We didn't approve Board of Works in, in that session either. So these minutes, along with the minutes from the December 7th, asking about signatures on the minutes.
They don't. It's not required.
When do council members sign the approved minutes? Yeah, there, it's the, the approved minutes, once the council has voted on them and that vote is recorded in the minutes, then the minutes are approved by the presiding officer, which would be the mayor, and attested to by the clerk. And those signed minutes are then scanned and placed on the website. So tonight's minutes, the minutes from tonight's meeting and the minutes, draft minutes from the December 7th council meetings will present, be presented for approval at the January 4th meeting of the common council. Does that answer your question? As presiding officer, the mayor signs the minutes. Okay. So we have, we have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
Is that Cody?
Spencer.
Spencer. Okay. Second?
Second.
So without objection, this meeting is adjourned at 6:40 PM. Thank you all, and do have a very Happy New Year. Let's hope 2021 is a bitter year from a COVID standpoint and from many others as well, so...
No bitter.
Cheers, everyone.
Bye, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.